All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove, Village Board of Trustees to order on Monday, June 20th at 6:30 PM. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, which means we are here in the Village Hall, as well as we have folks on the Zoom. The Zoom link is at the top of the agenda. And there's also an audio call-in number with associated meeting ID for this particular meeting. So we will, since we have some folks on the phone, we'll do a real call to confirm quorum, even though we have a quorum in the room.
Okay. Bowick?
Aye.
Murphy, here. Peterson?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Valencia?
Present.
Williams?
Present. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda is properly posted, so we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. We ask that if you are from public and would like to speak on a subject, that you share your name, your address, and your municipality, as well as hold your comments to no more than three minutes, in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak. So with that, I will turn over anybody in the hall from the public that would like to speak. I'm getting glaring eyes, so I'm no raising a hand, so we're going to move right over to the Zoom. Thank you. Anybody on the Zoom? All right, then, we'll move right then to item five, and that's discussing, consider regular board meeting minutes from June 6th. Any questions, comments, edits, or consideration for motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Is there a second? Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Item six, unfinished business. First up there is to review Village mission, vision, and consider potential amendments or discuss adding a list of Village values. So Matt was kind enough to dig up the mission and vision and value, and propose some values in the memo attached to, in our packet. Matt, I don't know if you want to say anything about this, or?
Yes, since the last time the board, when we established the mission and vision, that was back in 2018, and not that there needs to be any kind of edits or amendments, but it's probably a good practice every, at least every couple of years, to come back and take a look at that. And then I thought we could potentially attempt to take the next step, you know, since we're not doing full strategic planning, but adding some core values to that. And I just suggested five as examples. We could use those, add to, amend, or not do that altogether, but just some ideas. And generally, if you choose to do, to add some core values, usually you would see probably at least four, probably not more than eight. So I just did somewhere in the middle there with five.
All right.
So John, I don't know if you want to start with any comments on the mission and value, or mission and vision, and then more of a values discussion? And then my idea was, depending on the direction tonight, staff could work on something more formal to present on the values based on the comments tonight and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, well, I'll open up the floor to see if anybody has any general comments We can start with mission and then move right through. That might be a little easier, I suppose. Am I taking silence as it's okay, or? You guys are never the silent type, that's for sure. It is only been a few years since the former board. Many of you were still on that board when we did put this together, so I don't know. If there aren't any on the mission, then we'll move right to vision. If there's any wordsmithing or thoughts on this.
Does the board have an official position on the Oxford comma?
Oxford comma?
Do we have a position on that, whether we want it or not?
I didn't hear you, Chris.
Does the board have an official position on the Oxford comma?
Oh, I don't know. Some board members probably do.
I don't know.
It's well known how I feel about the Oxford comma, but I know Matt generally and JJ, actually, I'll put these in the poll too, when memos are put together, generally without the Oxford comma, so. Because I'm just all about consistency, so if all the staff is not using Oxford comma, I can do it really.
Any thoughts?
Wanting to wordsmith?
Yeah.
I would just put it in, because that's my personal preference, so it's not my
Well, if you oppose that, it's fine.
I can go either way on the Oxford comma, but I do like the way our vision in general, how it focuses on, you know, all the different things that we have to offer in Cottage Grove for businesses, community, families, neighbors. I do like our vision statement a lot, our mission statement. Not really one way or the other. I don't really have anything changes, but I do really like our general vision.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Chris. Other thoughts from anybody else? All right, then, we can move right then to talking about values. Again, Matt's proposed five. There's all kinds of words that you could use and definitions around this. So I'll turn over the board for these. Additional values, wordsmithing, et cetera. I think we're already recording, so.
So the values here are just examples. Those aren't necessarily what you're proposing, are they, Matt?
I mean, I was kind of putting them out there for discussion. I mean, I would personally propose these, but I... Forgot about the mic. I was putting them out there more so to start discussion, but as I was doing so, I mean, I thought they were, would likely align pretty close with, you know, knowing the board, so I thought most of them would fit quite well, but totally up to you guys.
Matt, tell me how you use these, or how the staff would leverage in day-to-day
I think we just have to be intentional in making it a habit to discuss these and work to reference them along with recommendations and board memos and things like that. And for department heads, you know, I think some of the staff that is under the department head or under middle-management level, they might not have, I'm sure they're very prideful on the work that they're doing, but it could, this could help give them some more meaning to tie what they're doing to, you know, what the board, what the Village values.
Oftentimes, in organizations, they use these also to help put together their goals too, along with priorities. These would be woven kind of in that same respect. That's against, if you use them that way, and I've seen it done in organizations.
And it's just something to keep at the forefront more often, you know, something like recognizing accomplishments and highlighting our wins. I think a big part of that is with our new communications manager, Gabe's, in attendance tonight here in the front row. He'll really help with that, but that's something I think we could really improve on. I don't think we tell our story enough about the good things we have going on, so. It's just one example.
Other questions, comments? Take them one by one. Do you want to, anybody have others that they would like to consider, or choose a different word? Or is this more something you guys want to noodle on a little bit longer?
I think this is a great list, Matt. It's very comprehensive, and yeah, I do like the wins portion, and it's, you know, making a difference in the lives of citizens every day. You know, from having a beautiful park planned to cleaned off street from the snow to get to the school and work on, so it's, you know, tying that into, you know, making a difference in the community on a daily basis and taking pride in that work, so, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of core Village values that are listed in the staff memo.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Now you just have to reword this so it comes up with an actual word, so that people remember it. No challenge or anything. All right, then...
I C R.
Yeah, something, come up with something.
I E R. I C R. Sorry.
No, that's kind of where I was going, so, I appreciate somebody who appreciates my humor, but it does help you remember that. Next up is to discuss and consider awarding bids for the park projects. I don't see... You want to come up, Dave, to?
So you guys probably remember, two weeks ago, Josh Straka was here. He's on vacation, so I'm basically filling in for him. You know, we had, I think, a pretty good discussion last time around about where the bids landed for the two parks projects, and we just weren't able to make a motion to award the contracts, so we're back here in the same position, more or less, and I think the next step is to award both of those and kind of move forward, so you guys, you know, you guys need to make a decision about that. Is there something that you want us to kind of go back through from last time?
I guess, I think the board asked for, or weren't even asked, Josh volunteered the value engineering effort, and so I don't know if that...
I'm going to share my screen here. So this is the table that we had prepared last time around. The, can you see my cursor here? The total cost of the bids was around $1.17 million for Bakken. And what we said we would do last time is investigate further cost savings with the contractor and try to understand if there is some opportunity for some value engineering to reduce the cost by eliminating certain things, and we've gone back and done that. And what we've found is that there's about $120,000 in savings, basically in four or five different items. Last time we met, the, I think, the approach was to not get rid of or eliminate the lighting and electrical from the project, so we've tried to maintain that yet. And so the, kind of the five items, or just four items really, that we were able to reduce were the overall earthwork by discussing with the geotech and just working locally. We're going to try to work with Houston on some of the major earthworks, since they're going to be right there, working on Clark and Grove. We identified about $45,000 in savings there. And then removing the colored concrete from the project completely, so we had added that in kind of late in the game, and that's one item that we identified that wasn't really necessary. It would be nice, but it's not, you know, it's not going to make or break this park. So that was about $30,000. And then we kind of looked back at the synthetic turf, and the contractor indicated that there may be some savings there by going a different, with a different vendor for that, so there's about $15,000 in savings there. And then the last thing is the lighting and electrical. It seemed like they were still kind of shopping around, or looking around for somebody to do the actual underground work, and there was about $30,000 in savings there. So that, if you take those five numbers I just rattled off, there's about $120,000 in savings that we feel pretty comfortable about. I guess the one thing we didn't talk about last time was how we go about awarding the contract and then, you know, incorporating these savings with the contract, and perhaps the attorney can weigh in on that. The way we've done that in the past is just process a change order right with the contracts, so basically you would get signed along with the contract when it first goes to the contractor and the village. That's typical, or there's another way, but that's not the way we dealt with it in other places.
Yeah, that was my first thought, is just doing a change order right away. Because I can't remember if we get a 10% or 15% leeway with change orders, but that would be the way we do it.
So I don't know if there's any questions, or?
For the change in turf, is there any change in warranty, durability? I mean, are we, is it something where we end up saving that, was it $15,000, and then have to come back in 15 years and replace it?
I think that's something we could talk more about, but I don't think the contractor would have suggested it if they thought it was a lesser product. So we haven't gotten to that stage where we would kind of review shop drawings and determine if it's an or equal or not, but we certainly could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. I wouldn't want to, yeah, kick the can down the road, to spend even more to replace it and not that much time.
Right. It was a product that he had used before elsewhere, so he felt pretty good about it, but we specified something, you know, that we were comfortable with and had seen, so it didn't get approved as an or equal yet, I guess is the bottom line.
Other questions from board members?
It's a good opportunity to utilize Houston, working there with the roadway anyway and the earthwork, so.
Yeah, and just that item alone, it was like a $10,000 savings, just because they're
Has there been any communication with Houston yet, or?
Yeah, so Josh did talk to, I don't remember, Wade at the pre-con about it, and he was able to provide a cost. So then we, you know, we basically said, okay, the Spahn Ranch was able to deduct $30,000, and it was going to cost $20,000 for Houston to do it, so that's the $10,000 savings.
And Community Park is, as we discussed last meeting, nothing's changed.
We haven't investigated anything there, because we, frankly, we feel pretty comfortable with where we landed there.
We just weren't able to award the bid officially at that time because of the agenda? Okay.
Other questions? Otherwise, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to award the bids for the park projects as laid out in the packet.
Second.
Do we need to specify the change order?
Yes.
With the change orders as discussed, is that thorough enough, or would you? Okay.
For Bakken.
As recommended.
As recommended, by strand.
Second.
All right, thank you, David. Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, David. All right, moving then on to new business. And this, you get to see, correct? First item up is initial resolution authorizing the general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $4.875 million for street improvement projects.
Good evening. I'm going to go through the pre-sale report that was in your packet for this bond issue. I'll speak to the resolutions that are on your agenda as I go through the presentation. There's multiple resolutions that are all related to this same financing. I'll kind of explain why there's, the purpose of those resolutions as we go through the information. Just a couple of comments on background before we speak to this particular financing. The Village hasn't financed capital projects in the bond market in a couple of years. I think as capital projects have unfolded the last few years, and working with staff, we kind of determined that it'd be more efficient to roll, you know, a couple of years' worth of projects into one debt issuance. So this particular bond issue is a little larger than what the Village has done, you know, in the recent past, but that's largely due that it's covering several years' worth of projects. So what's being financed are projects identified in the Village's capital improvement plan, consists of some fire equipment, park improvements, solar panel improvements related to the municipal services building that impacts the police, public works, and utilities, and then some street improvement projects as well. So those are the general types of projects that are being financed. So I'm going to go through each of the tables that is included in the, in your pre-sale report, just kind of give an overview of the fiscal impact of this financing. So the pre-sale report, there's tables that are numbered in the back after the written executive summary, so I'm going to start with Table 1, which is really a summary of the Village's existing debt profile, your existing general obligation debt. So in the far-left-hand column is your total principal and interest payments. That's just annually what the Village is responsible for paying based on existing debt obligations already outstanding. And then in addition to the property tax levy, the Village budgets several revenue sources that are used to help make those principal and interest payments, mainly revenue from the water and sewer utility, and also revenue from TID District Number 5 and TID District Number 7. So in the column labeled net tax levy, that shows the Village's current levy for debt service, and then we project that going forward, you know, not factoring in this bond issue or any future debt issues. We'll look at the impact of that in a moment, but this kind of shows where we're starting from. So you can see the Village's debt service levy, if it remained unchanged, it really is remaining stable over the next couple of years. We incorporated the project list of what's being financed in Table 2. That includes a lot of the projects that you recently just put out to bid, and then we've included some placeholders for capital projects from 2023 to 2027. So this project list has kind of evolved as more information has become available on projects and discussions with Matt and JJ as recently as last week. You know, typically, in late summer, early fall, we present to the Village Board the Financial Management Plan, which is a five-year forecast of both the Village's operational needs and capital needs, and we know we're going to make some adjustments to this particular project list and accompany a few other, and add a few other projects. But we always like to look at debt issuance in a multi-year context, because certainly you have some capital needs you're looking at financing now, likely some needs into the future, so we want to make sure that we're kind of planning ahead. So the list in Table 2 just provides all of the specific projects that are incorporated into this particular bond issue. So for this bond issue, we're financing about $7.7 million of project costs in total. Table 3 is just the summary of the bond issue and then broken down by purpose, so the total amount of, that you're issuing bonds for to cover the project costs and the issuance expenses is $7,895,000. Then in Table 3, you'll see that amount broken down by various categories, and this is where all of those resolutions kind of come into play. So when you issue general obligation bonds, you can fund several dips, several different types of projects with one bond issue, as we're doing here, financing roads, street, facility improvements, fire equipment, some utility projects. But under state law, you're required to identify how much of that bond issue is financing each type of project. So we have a street portion, a park portion, a public works building, fire portion, and then the building, water and sewer are all related to the solar panels at the municipal services building. Since that's a multiple-service building, we're required to break down or estimate how much of that will benefit each of those types of areas. So it's one bond issue, but then there's initial resolutions for each type of purpose. So under state law, you can only use the amount of the bonds for the type of project identified. So let me give an example. So you're intending to finance some road improvement projects. That's the largest part of this bond issue. You have specific road projects you're intending to complete. If for some reason those road projects come in under budget, you can use the portion of this bond issue that was identified for road projects and use those remaining proceeds on any other road project in the Village. Same with parks. If you have leftover money for parks, you can spend it on other park improvements. But if you had leftover money in both roads and parks, you can't commingle them across purposes under state law. So that's the reason why we break this down into all these different categories and why you have multiple resolutions on your agenda. It's for each component and each type of project that's being financed with the bonds. So the next table is Table 4, which really just shows the debt service allocation that, you know, spread across two pages. While we have several different types of projects that are being financed, all of the debt service is going to be repaid by the property tax levy. So while we have the debt amortized by different types of projects, the repayment, no, excuse me, there is a small utility portion, the water and sewer portion, which is amortized very short, because it's a small amount, so the rest of that is going to be repaid by the levy. So the bulk of this will impact the Village's debt service levy. And that is really presented on Page 5, and this is that multi-year context, so I'm going to work my way across from left to right. So in the far-left-hand column in Table 5 is your existing debt levy that was summarized on the first page, and then we show all the future proposed debt issues that we've included in this model. So there was a financing that the Village authorized earlier this year that was funded through the State Trust Fund Loan Program that paid off some prior debt outstanding, so we show that amortization schedule, the estimated amortization schedule for these bonds, and then estimated debt service payments for debt issuance all the way out through 2027. So in that planning model, some of those projects are anticipated to be repaid by TID 5 revenues, and then the small portion of this bond issue would be repaid by water and sewer revenues. So we show that as abatements or offsets to your total debt payments. So in the column... So in the column under debt service levy in table five, that shows how your debt service levy is projected to change over the next several years. So we've structured these bonds and the future bonds, so your debt service levy change each year would be relatively consistent for budget purposes. So you can see to fund, you know, all the capital projects that we had identified in this plan, the village's debt service levy would increase by about $225,000 per year from 2023 through 2028. And so you'll see in the far right-hand column, the tax impact on that. So there's the tax rate per thousand and then the annual taxes for debt service on a $315,000 home. So under 2022 budget for that $315,000 home, the debt service cost was about $306. If everything was funded in this plan, you know, by 2028, that would increase to about $668. So it's kind of showing that impact over several years, kind of full funding of all projects that are presently in the plan, fully knowing that that's, you know, going to change as the village goes through its annual budget process and prioritization of capital projects. The only financing that you're authorizing this evening is the 22 bond issue. Everything else that we have in this plan is just there for planning purposes and illustration. You're taking no action on any, any future financing this evening. And so the last item that we look at in terms of kind of your financial metrics is your general obligation borrowing capacity. So what that is, is under state law, you could, the amount of principal that you can have outstanding for general obligation debt cannot exceed 5% of the village's total equalized value. So at the beginning of this fiscal year, the village had about 17.4 million of general obligation debt outstanding. That was, that's about 38% of the village's debt limit. Kind of based on this plan, you kind of go up to about 50% and then kind of stay in the upper, you know, 40%, and then it starts to kind of drop off. So, you know, shows that you've still got a comfortable margin for other capital projects that, you know, may not be identified yet in this plan. Your remaining borrowing capacity, you know, remains, you know, very healthy, you know, upper 27 million of dollars. We would never recommend that you, you know, utilize your full borrowing capacity. Always want to preserve some for unforeseen circumstances, but also, you know, want to make sure that you're, it's really about repayment as well, making sure that the fiscal impact fits in line with your overall financial needs. So in terms of the overall debt issuance process, where we are tonight is at the beginning of the process. So the first step are all those resolutions that are on your agenda. Those do have to be acted on as separate action items and they do recall, require a roll call vote. So just to make that clear for procedure purposes. If you decide to proceed with the financing, you know, a lot will happen kind of over the course of the next month. We will work with staff, as we've done in the past, to help prepare what's called the official statement. It's the public sector equivalent of like a prospectus for our company. Includes a lot of financial and economic information about the village that is made available to bond underwriters and financial institutions. And we will also work with the village to obtain a rating from Standard and Poor's, S and P. The village is presently rated double A by S and P, so we'll go through a formal rating call with the, with the rating analyst. The bonds are scheduled to sell at your second meeting in July. The bond sale process is conducted very similar to how you would, you know, typically bid a public works project. We put it out for bids, so you, you know, we put, take bids from banks and underwriters. Whoever submits the lowest true interest cost is, you know, typically who we recommend that the bid be awarded to. So it's a very transparent process. We present a bid tabulation to the village board. The bonds are sold the date of a meeting with the expectation that you'll, you know, act on it that day. The reason we do it that way is because literally interest rates in the bond market change daily. So when underwriters are submitting their bids, you know, they want some assurance that it's going to be acted on in a, in a reasonable period of time in case there's major changes, you know, in the market in that particular day or that particular week. And then after we conduct the bond sale, we'll present those for consideration and award to all of you at the village board. And then the closing receipt of funds by the village occurs a couple of weeks later. So just the parties that are involved in this process, Ellers were the village's municipal advisor. So, you know, it's, we represent you throughout this whole transaction. It's kind of our job to help you understand the fiscal impacts and get the lowest cost of capital possible. Another major party that's involved is the village's bond council and disclosure council, which is Corals and Brady. So they prepare all the resolutions, help review the official statement and just provide other legal guidance necessary through the debt issuance process. So that's kind of the overview. I'm happy to go back and answer any questions on the fiscal impact or answer any questions on the process.
All right, any questions for Greg?
Greg, I had a question. I'm just trying to make sense of the table two in the packet. There's, this bond is in total, right, is around seven, 7 million, correct?
7.7 million of projects, yes.
And I think, actually, I think I just answered my question. So the 7.7 is for the 2022 projects, not for anything beyond 2022, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, that, yeah, table two is confused, that's why I'm looking at 20.3, 24, 25.6, that's right. So, okay, this is only for 20.2 projects, so that I answered my question, so I appreciate it.
No, you're welcome, yes. The other, we showed the future financings in table two for columns 23 through 27 to show the projects that were included in that plan, but that's, you're not authorizing any of that this evening.
And just a note to Greg mentioned that we're, we're funding at least two full years of projects here. So a couple of examples are the Glacial Drumwind Path and the BB Bus Road Intersection Urbanization. Those projects have been completed and we've just been, we've of course paid for those, we've completed those projects, paid for them, and then we'll be reimbursing ourselves with this debt issuance. So we have some other internal resolutions. Probably more information you need to know, but in the 90s, the village board authorized staff to work with our consultants on, on documenting these internal resolutions and then those get verified by our bond council and then we reimburse ourselves. So it allows for, for us to time, time the bond issuances for what makes most sense for the village and move forward with, with projects for, when we have cash flow that's available and to hit the market when we want to.
Thanks, Matt. Other questions for Greg? Otherwise, this is, we need to walk through each of these resolutions. I don't know if anybody wants to start doing that or not.
I'll start it off. Make a motion to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,875,000 for street improvement projects.
All right, is there a second? Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, we'll go through the roll call.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. Williams.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next up, item B.
I'll make a motion to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,305,000 for parks and public grounds projects.
Is there a second? Thank you, David, thank you Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then we'll do the roll call.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, item C. Is there a second? Thanks, Chris, thanks Melissa. Any further discussion? All right, having heard none, then we'll do again the roll call.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, item D.
I'll make a motion to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $450,000 for equipment of the fire department.
All right, thanks Heidi, thanks Melissa, and thanks David. All right, we'll go through the roll call again.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye. Motion carries then. Next up, item E.
I'll make a motion to approve initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $95,000 for the construction of police facilities.
All right, thank you, Chris, thank you Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then we'll do the roll call.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for water system projects.
All right, is there a second? All right, thank you David, thank you Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all, we'll do the roll call again.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye. Next up, item G.
I'll make a motion to approve initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for sewer projects.
Thank you, Chris, is there a second? Thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then go through the roll call.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item H, a resolution consideration.
So this is the general resolution that incorporates all of them?
Yes, it's kind of the roll-up resolution that just verifies the total amount that you're borrowing.
Thanks Greg, and thank you for your comprehensive presentation, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $7,895,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2022A.
All right, thank you Heidi, is there a second? Thank you David. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none, then we'll go through the roll call on this.
Ballwig. Murphy. Peterson. Ratcliffe. Stoa. Valencia. And Williams.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks Greg.
You're welcome, good to see everybody.
All right, next up is discuss and consider sound amplification permits. In our packet. Anything on this?
I guess I can just comment that they're pretty straightforward. One's for Miracle League and one's for an event at Bakken Park, I believe it was, so, pretty straightforward.
Say that three times fast. Any questions from board members on these?
I'll move to approve the sound amplification permits for 819, 22, and for the Miracle League.
Thank you Melissa, is there a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. That was easier to do than roll call. Next up is discuss village prioritization process. There is a list in our packet of all the priorities that were submitted by board members. I don't know, Matt ran out of room, so I don't know if he has, he's the one who put together, tabulated everything. Any questions or comments from board members on, on that? This is just the first step of it, obviously just gathering all of your all's input and then, and then the next kind of step will be ranking them. So you can see that in here, all the, all the comments that you shared, I think Matt grabs them verbatim, cut and paste, and puts our initials there for those. So we get quite a list of great things to consider in our prioritization. Any discussion on this, or you guys are just waiting to put your scores down?
Then we get 20 points usually is what Matt does.
Right.
Divvy up however you want.
Amongst them. And then what we'll do is we'll tabulate them and then we can see how they all kind of rank and that, that'll help us through the budget cycle, just a general discussion about, you know, where we, where we see things.
The CDA is working, the community development authority is working, and so, for what is working that's already in progress.
And we do have a new person on staff that's also itching to probably help out too as well. And others that are willing to pass it along. Thank you David for pointing that out. Any questions, comments, otherwise we can just, this is just discuss. There's, I think, we don't need to take any action because we'll, we'll take further action with, with the continuation of the prioritization process.
Matt will probably want our points by next meeting, I would expect.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, yes, thank you for. So he'll send something out, I think probably a grid for all of us to work off of, just to make it easier. And however you choose to communicate that back, you fill out the grid, you just send him a note via email, whatever works easiest for you, and then we'll sort through that and get it back on the agenda with, so everybody can kind of talk through that. And that's really, I think, where the discussion starts to happen.
And is our next meeting going to be July 5th?
Right now, I don't think so. I think we can all take an extra little long weekend or an extra day of trudging through the job because nobody else is going to be there to cover for you. So right now, there's nothing pressing that I see, but. Rick, unless you know of some legal matter?
No.
Okay, good, because I don't want to know about it. All right, then we will move then to reports from village boards and commissions and committees. First up would be Public Works Properties and Sustainability, Heidi?
Yep, thanks. We met on June 7th and we talked about the village specifications and standard detail drawing, which the committee had been working on for quite some time, on all the specs for when a developer builds or a new project, all the little pieces that need to meet certain standards. So adopted those and they'll start being incorporated into all of our projects and developments. We also discussed a bike and pedestrian comprehensive plan and that was something that trustee Peterson wrote a memo for to talk about how we're gonna, we've been investing a lot in bike paths and we've talked a lot about connectivity and so kind of bringing everything together, what are our goals in that, bringing in some resident input, places where they see that we could improve in areas, safety and just making people feel more comfortable utilizing alternative transportation to get around the village. So you may have seen, the committee gave the go-ahead to start gathering information on that. You may have seen a survey on our website and through Facebook, so spread the word along to take the survey. There's also a map where you can put a pin in and a comment on a certain area if you. So you may have seen, the committee gave the go-ahead to start gathering information on that. You may have seen a survey on our website and through Facebook, so spread the word along to take the survey. There's also a map where you can put a pin in and a comment on a certain area if you would like to recommend the committee take that into account as they develop that comprehensive plan. Do you have anything to add to that, JJ? I'm pretty excited about that map.
Uh, yes, I haven't looked at it yet today, actually. I was hoping more people would pin things, so yeah, encourage everybody you see to make your comments there. No hold barred, go ahead and put them right there. But great survey response. I think we're up over 200 now, so, lot of information gathered. So thank you, Heidi, for sharing that. Basically, I just stole that from the one you shared with me, but I think it's a perfect survey to get folks to actually participate.
Yeah, it's based for you to write out comments. It's not real lengthy, so we appreciate any responses. David, did you have anything to add about the conversation on that?
I'm pretty excited about it. Thank you, David, for your participation, and I'm excited to hear what you have to say.
Okay, great. We did have some of our public works projects start off, so we had a few concerns in the first day that construction started, but hopefully that's calmed down since. I don't know if you have anything else to add from the reports. I think that was kind of the main topic.
That was it. No, and you're right, they calmed down since.
Okay, good. Great. And then we moved our next meeting to the 12th, because we weren't sure if we'd have board on the 5th, so we'll meet next on the 12th. If there's any questions?
JJ, are we leveraging GIS to map the existing trails, or does not, that doesn't apply?
I'm gonna reach out to Aaron and Strand in the coming week or so to update that, and that's the plan, yeah.
Okay, so we're, we can leverage that tool for, for the paths?
Yep.
So maintenance and all that other stuff, you know, eventually can be utilized there, just like everything else is done in that?
That's the plan.
Okay, super. Any questions for Heidi? All right, then we have utility commission. Heidi, again.
Oh, that's Krista.
Oh, that's right, sorry. We switched that up, because you're on plan. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
We met on Wednesday, June 8th. We discussed and approved four zero lot line applications over on progress. And we also talked about the 2021 compliance maintenance annual report, for which we scored very well, and that was about it. Meeting, I believe, lasted seven minutes long, so.
Wow, efficient.
Thank you, Chris. I know you just hurt your back and made an appearance to help us set a record, but we did have, we had a couple items to address, so thank you.
Any questions for Chris? All right, we'll move then to, I'll take a stab at plan commission, and I'll do a quick overview, and you can see from our agenda, we've got several discuss and consider items that came from plan, so do a quick overview and then hit on those individually. So we met on the 8th of June, covered a public hearing for the conditional use for an indoor, indoor commercial entertainment land use for space in the edge of Grove Building at 2515, and this is for Grace Coffee, so we covered that. Then the commission took that item up, made a recommendation to, for the board to approve. Next then was a consideration for the commission for an application for Gray Wolf to do a certified survey map for 11-acre parcel out of a 38, 36.8-acre parcel on Highway N. And again, the commission recommended that the board approve that. Was, next up was, we covered some zero lot line modifications on progress for Rosso, and I see that they're here in, here as well. So that was also recommended by the commission for approval, and that ran from 509 through 523 Progress, those buildings. The only, there was a condition from staff for maintenance agreement, I believe, or something of that. Amongst the. Just a reminder to record those? Yeah, record them with the county. Then covered, again, discuss and consider urban use area amendment. This is just to start the process. Aaron's already plugging along on this, and this is for TID number 10. And again, that resolution was recommended for approval by the commission, and those were the items, and that follows right in line with what we have here in, for item A through D in your packet. So we'll start with Grace Coffee, since that's the first, and again, this is conditional use permit, and this is within corner of Main and Gaston, that large apartment building. There's 8,000 square feet, and they're looking to occupy, I think, 3,500 square feet or so. And they have stores in Verona, Sun Prairie, Madison? About a half dozen. Yeah, somewhere in, in the. Around the area? Yeah. And they wish to come to Cottage Grove. So this is one of the first steps they need to do in order to do that. Yeah, so just building out the space. They don't need any approvals for that. It's just because they want to get an alcohol license that it becomes a conditional use permit. This in itself does not give them the alcohol permit. They have to come back and apply for that. We're just saying we're okay with them making that application. Any questions from board members or comments?
This is Sarah. I do have a question. I know that Grace Coffee made the news last fall for the number of health code violations that they have had. Did they address that at all in any of these conversations?
Nobody asked them about it, so no, it didn't come out.
Maybe that could just be something to talk with them about as they continue their process?
That is something I was gonna ask too. They failed several inspections and were, it was pretty bad, so just making sure that everything's sanitary.
So there wouldn't be municipal inspections necessarily?
Yeah, and this is a conditional use, you are allowed to attach conditions, so it could be, you know, we could add a condition, they're saying they must comply with all county health requirements or state health requirements. That way it's actually in that permit.
Thank you, Rick. Sarah for bringing that up.
And then what happens if they fail to comply with county health standards?
So if there are violations of conditions of their permit, then the village could move to revoke the permit. That would typically be like a hearing process, or we could cite them ourselves for violations of their own permit, which would be a forfeiture action. So we could find them basically on top of whatever their health code violation forfeitures are.
Are there questions or comments?
So we would attach that condition to this approval?
Yes, so if you wanted to make it a condition, your approval, you know, you'd have your typical language and then add in your motion with the additional condition that they comply with all state and local health requirements.
The other staff recommendations, Aaron, was something about the signs, is that the other one?
Just a reminder, it's kind of a standard language, but they'll have to come back for some separate process.
I guess, what are the conditions of determining the area of the home? I guess, Mary, help me understand, how is that a condition if it's greater to be a separate, if you brought this?
It's more of a reminder just to have it talked about at a meeting, so they're aware that they have to do it. And we typically do that with most, I think, almost everyone I've seen, it's kind of Aaron's little standard reminder, so we do it with all applicants, if they're gonna have signage.
Okay, what's your name?
One other thing, just to pop through my head with this health requirement, we could do, again, conditions, right, so we can add something like a, if they do receive a health code violation, they have to report it to the village within a certain amount of time.
You're making the motion even longer if somebody does consider it.
Is it an annual, like, is there a regular schedule for inspections, or do you know how the, that process works? It's a public health, Madison Bay County is what does inspections?
I am not familiar with that process, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And as far as I know, they need to go yearly.
I used to work at a restaurant, but I guess it's about.
Yeah, and I do know there's like three health inspectors right now.
I guess, Rick, was reasonable to ask for notification if you have a failing rate, 15 days, 30 days? I'm trying to remember what, I can never remember what day it's on, or when it is, I think, yearly, 14 days.
Yeah, I would, I was thinking a week or two weeks would be reasonable.
I just, I'm just, certainly, can you go down, right, if we say three days, then, then one would survive a year, right, if it's seven days, nine days, 15 days, 10 days, 12 days, just trying to think, like, just based on your guidance, if I was to make a motion, right? To me, it's five business days, but would that survive a year?
Yeah, I, I mean, typically, the standard would just be, is the conditional, is the condition reasonable? Does it further public health, safety, welfare? Something like that is totally reasonable, you know, we're not asking that they do it within an hour per se, so it's, a few days is more than reasonable.
Yeah, three days and three full weeks, but I don't, again, I'm not aware, so, okay. But my gut reaction was to believe, but if, 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 based on the advice of the council, five days more than that, or maybe it's.
I would say five. There's not like any rhyme, any, um, legal, legal benchmark that we would be using. It's just whatever the village board determines.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for Grace Coffee for approval with conditional use permits for singular commercial entertainment land use with alcohol license in the distance of the commercial space located at the edge at Cottage Grove Building at 2515 Gaston Road, with the condition that they comply with all county health department rules and regulations, and should a violation occur, they should notify the village within three business days.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion?
I just have a question about what we'll do with the information about a violation. I mean, some violations are, I remember some from restaurant work, you know, you're dipping a glass glass into the ice bin, where you're supposed to use a scooper to put the ice in the ice bin, versus, you know, like a more serious health code violation, like improper storage of food or something. So I just want to help direct staff on like what to do with that information. I don't know, I don't have any specific thoughts on that, but I just wanted to throw it out there.
And those are definitely conversations we can have, because the violation, we can either bring it to the board for further action, or we can have a staff discussion inside of it, if it's a serious violation, or we want to, or, or violations of their conditional use permit. So, you know, we can sort of work out that at the staff level, and if it's a serious violation, we can bring it to the board for further action. Just one question. Does anyone know, are there different terminologies used for, are there different classifications of violation? Not to, not to further complicate the motion, but I was, you know, if there was a certain type?
From the articles I was reading, there was like priority health code violation, and then there were kind of the standard health code violation, so I wonder, I think it's priority health code violation is the language I spell for the more serious ones.
So my, my thought would just be, would, would the board want to only include for notification to us the, the priority ones that Sarah was referencing?
Yeah, so let me, let me introduce my opinion, and say, notify within three days of any priority violation.
Are we going with the second then?
Yes, second, that change.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Got that, Lisa? All right. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries then. Moving next to discuss and consider application for Gray Wolf for a certified survey map on the, like, on an 11-acre acre parcel on County Highway N from an existing 36.8-acre parcel. This is the east side of the road across from the Amazon site, from the northern portion of the Amazon site. That 11 acres on the front edge is higher ground, that's more developable. The remainder is lowland and wetland that most likely is not. So Gray Wolf's looking to purchase the land, split off the 11 acres. They would keep that, and I believe the plan is the remainder would go back to Tom Beacon, the owner they bought it from. So we'd recommend approval with the conditions in the report, which was just a couple of notes they need to add to the CSM, and Strand had asked them to enlarge the amount of land they're dedicating along the Highway N front edge to match what's being dedicated on the other side. Right. Any questions on this?
What was the, I see there's one nay to that. Was there any specific reason?
Not that you mentioned during the meeting? No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Otherwise, consideration for motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Gray Wolf for approval of the survey map to divide an 11-acre parcel along the Cronoship County Highway N from existing 36.8-acre parcel, number 0811-331-9001-1, with conditions, staff conditions.
Motion's second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next up was an application, or four applications for zero lot line modifications from 509 through 523 Progress Drive. This is for existing duplex properties. Currently, each duplex is on one parcel. They're just looking to split them down in the middle. Recommend approval, like John mentioned earlier, they just have to record the maintenance agreement with each of those parcels, and Ron and Kathy are here if there's any questions, but it's pretty straightforward. Any questions from board members?
I will move to approve the four applications from Ron and Kathy Rosso for approval of zero lot line modifications at 509 to 511, 513 to 515, 517 to 519, and 521 to 523 Progress Drive with staff conditions.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next up then, we had discuss and consider resolution 2022-06, verifying the proposed urban service agreement amendment application is consistent with the village board comprehensive plan, Village of Cottage Grove comprehensive plan. Aaron, anything on this one you want to mention? This is a required part of the application process for the urban service area amendment. There's two locations that we're looking to add. One is the remaining parcels in TID 10 around the Amazon site, and then the other is on the south end of the village.
And then the other is on the south end of the village, or the two thousand and one realty property that they're looking to annex and add on to some land they had previously put into the urban service area a few years ago. And all their plans for those areas are consistent with the comp plan, and that's all we're verifying with the resolution.
Can those, those aren't being added to the Tid though, are they? Or?
They're, they're already in.
Oh.
Can I just make a comment about the process real quick to encourage my colleagues? If you cannot all, this is the first step, as Erin mentioned, in the process. I serve on the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, which has a contract with the DNR to look at the engineering of this, to make sure that it follows all the state and local laws for drainage and related to water quality. But CARPSY is also a regional planning organization, so they're trying to promote regional planning and cooperation throughout the county to achieve goals such as sustainability, resiliency to climate change, preserving natural areas, access to housing for people, jobs, focusing this growth in urban areas or already developed areas, which were on the I ninety-four corridor. And then this has been part of our comprehensive plan. Been a decade in the making. So any support that my colleagues might have for a portion of a meeting, I think it would be meaningful to the organization to have that support to staff and just a showing at the meeting, if anyone can fit it in their time to stop in at the public hearing, we'd appreciate it.
Thanks, Heidi, and thanks for serving on that. Work too as well. Any other discussion on this?
And when is that meeting?
It'll probably be the second Thursday in August, is that?
Yep, looks like August eleventh.
Public hearings start at seven PM, Sheriff, so as long as we're the first public hearing, that's right when we'll start our, our presentation.
My understanding, they actually make their decision at the following meeting in September.
Yep, it's a public hearing at one meeting and then the approval letter. But the first meeting is where they talk about all the, what I think are the great things that we're doing in Cottage Grove with infill of areas, job opportunities, sustainability, water quality, so that there is kind of an overview about what we're doing in Cottage Grove. And I think our goals align with their goals for the region. So sometimes some of the commissioners don't feel the same way. They can be a little harsh. So our support, I'm sure, would be appreciated.
Yeah, like I already said, the CARPSY plan does identify the Anna ninety-four intersection as a regional employment center, so this should be right in line with what they're saying they want to do.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor then? I'm sorry, we didn't have a motion? Oh, man. It's not even a late night either. Sorry. Thank you, being honest, thank you for being honest. All right, this is Discuss and Consider. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution twenty-two dash zero six, verifying our proposed urban service area amendment application is consistent with the Village of Cottage Grove comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Heidi, and thank you, David. Any other further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up then, we have the Tourism Commission, Melissa.
So the Tourism Commission approved five hundred dollars from our funds to go to the Deer Grove EMS, S's upcoming Certified Ambulance Documentation Specialist Course to be held at Summit Credit Union, to help spread the word about Cottage Grove, and hopefully that they'll stay at our hotel then and go to our businesses and help our local economy. And then we had some discussion about our upcoming Centennial Celebration and some good ideas, and it ranged from very small and just kind of kept expanding. So we aren't really quite sure where we've landed yet, but we're going to bring back a bunch of ideas for our next meeting, I think is what we landed on. So if anybody has ideas, please send them to me or John or Erin, and we can bring those back to the commission. And we look, Erin had a diagram of sorts for us to go through, to workshop, on what the desired outcomes of working with the Chamber of Commerce as our tourism entity. And we realized we don't have enough information currently, so we are going to keep working on that and with the hotel to get the better idea of what's going on, of the information that we need in order to make those determinations. So, and our next meeting will likely be July fourteenth. We're still trying to figure that out, too. And we'll revisit the, the chamber discussion for our tourism entity and our Centennial Celebration. Any questions? Or anything I missed?
We have a little bit of time with Centennial, it's in twenty twenty-four. So, but it'll come up fast, twenty twenty-four.
Depends on how, how big we're going to make it.
Exactly.
Anytime we need.
Right.
We're thinking about monthly stuff, or just like one weekend, or all year, so.
Yeah, there were some assignments sent out from that, too, so we've got some work to do. Check in with some community organizations.
That may, might be something that our communications director maybe could help. I see, I saw him shaking his head over there, so. Did you guys do a coin, or did they do a?
Yeah, we passed it out, we had tons of them at the hall, and then you know, at office, and people would take them, and they haven't been since they have.
All right, so better put that on your calendar, July fourteenth probably. Thanks.
All right. Next up, Emergency Preparedness Committee. Is Lieutenant An? Oh, great.
So we, we made some minor changes to the emergency preparedness plan that the committee did unanimously approved. Blanick was updating phone numbers. We were putting the new village symbol on the packet, some grammatical stuff that we cleaned up. There was nothing of gigantic substance that we changed. It was sent out to the heads of the departments for their approval, which we took all that feedback and we added it to the plan. So we're just looking for approval of that plan so we can put that in place. And then Lisa will put it on the website as we need to update it every year.
And so, do you want to cover any other things on, that we covered, or?
I don't know if you want to just wait down until I do more research on it, so I can come back more educated on it.
Okay. So that was looking at emergency action plan for large events. So it's just a initial discussion that Emergency Preparedness Committee had, which is a great idea as far as if we do have those, you know, two hundred and fifty plus more folks in one area, you know, what is their plan if they need to get out of that area, or some, if there's, you know, inclement weather or something of that sort if they're outside, just what, what's their plan of action, you know, and, and something that's put in, put in place in other communities. And so we think it's a good idea. So Lieutenant's taken, he's going to dig into, into that a bit more and then bring that back to the committee. And then just planning on a tabletop exercise in the fall. And so that, the working, working's going on with that now as well. I think that was it.
And I move to approve the emergency preparedness plan.
All right, thank you, Melissa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up, Library Board, David.
Yeah. So we met on June fifteenth during the reunion, doing a presentation from Creology, Cre- Creology Consulting, I probably said that. On the benefit and location of library tech fees, library tech fees, you pay capital costs, it's a, it's not, and stuff, and very fun. And you also use to fund future attention. They can start accumulating immediately as one way to take the growth of the library world public with this idea next, this year. Next, the Library Board will be completing this day in County Library, starting by the summer, visiting all twenty-nine public libraries and meeting with their library directors. We've got an update on the financial ability study this meeting, financial ability study initiative, survey with mail, they plan to have a survey, they have a, a line, a final report, we should, done for the August, whether it would be. The meeting will also be presented finally in August, allowing the library membership meeting as well, it'd be on Zoom. Friends update, Friends program this year has had over five hundred participants, things like planning, every day, I don't know, just the other day, or another day, another. Then we talked about, discussed July meeting, both of the questions, three, our next meeting will be hybrid, July twentieth, I think.
Any questions for David? All right, move on then to Deer Grove EMS Commission. I can take a stab at this, and then if Brittany needs to jump in and save me, she will. I stepped in as alter, where Sarah was out enjoying herself. So, let's see here, normal items, again, we met on the sixteenth of June. Covered the financial reports, budgeted bills, approval of expenses, write offs, which weren't any, aging counts. Then had Chief provide a staff report, highlights there, they did, I think that they do go through the packet. I think the highlight there was that there are two new full-time paramedic positions that are being on boarded right now, and they are from internal applicants from the volunteer groups. So it's great to see those two new members, and they do already have experience on the force, so it's, it's nice to see them joining, joining the organization. So that was, I think, a, a big thing there. Went through all the details about mileage, et cetera, on that and call volume, et cetera. And then touched on a grant, a potential grant, a flex grant, which, which they're working, going to work through to try to get some of that money. It just was announced very recently. So it's overall twelve million for EMS providers across Wisconsin. So hopefully we'll get an opportunity at some of those funds. Then dug into correspondence, had a couple folks thank the EMS paramedics for their service. Then dug into the intergovernment agreement. Went through a number of items there, general agreement on some, and far apart on some others, which we can discuss in detail, particularly funding. And we kind of knew that going in, but more agreement on some other ones, which was nice. So a little bit of progress there. Talked about the mobile portable radio replacement plan status, and again, we're really waiting for some, some of the grant stuff to come in before we can do any, anything there. And then wrapped it up about seven forty-eight. Anything I missed, or anything?
I think they're waiting on the, the new bus, like, September, they're thinking.
Oh, yeah. The, yeah, we got a.
A delivery update.
Yeah, the ambulance, piece by piece, is making its way across North America. So I think it's in Canada now.
I think so.
So, but making progress. But yes, I think September is what they're.
Yeah.
So.
Is it going to be like a national ambulance before?
I think it should have stickers from every place it's been, because it's been in Mexico.
I want to see its passport.
Yeah. Rhode Island, up to Canada, through various ways, yeah, so it's been a lot of different places. So very interesting how that's all done.
That's totally doable, we wrap the ambulance, we can add, we can add the.
Thanks, Chief. All right, anything else since you're on that you wanted to highlight?
No, I think you did a great job, President. I think the progress that was made in the IGA was very good and sets us up to potentially get maybe a final document at our next meeting.
All right, any questions there? We'll move then to reports from village officers. Rick?
Nothing major to report. Just want to let you guys know, so we, Stafford hired a new attorney who's going to be working very closely with Larry and myself. His name is Derek Punches. You may see him on emails, and the goal is to get him out to a few of these meetings, because he's just going to be working on our municipal team a lot. But, you know, if, having two attorneys here, we would be double billing you guys for that. It's just sort of like when Larry and I first started working here, two of us went to meetings just to get up to speed on what was happening in the village. So just want to give you guys a heads up that will be happening here in the near future.
All right. Then we'll move on to Communication, Melissa's business, starting off with the consideration of the vouchers. Any questions or comments there?
I had one question about the, the minutes on page two, the APG Media of Wisconsin for the May Village Board meetings.
Oh, that, that's the minutes that get published in the local paper.
We have a lot of them in May, the three hundred and fifty dollars.
It, yeah, it's crazy sometimes.
Thanks.
Any other question or comments?
I'll move to approve the vouchers.
All right, is there a second? Thank you, David, thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence? I don't know if anybody got anything I didn't. It's good, other than JJ got some regarding road tearing up roads, but we already heard about that. Probably more, too, I'm sure, starting on Clark today. All right, we'll move then to upcoming community events. I just want to put a quick plug in for the festival, Fireman's Festival over the weekend. Mother Nature dealt us very nice weather. When I was in the area, it seemed fairly busy. Hot to Trot went off very well, I think. I saw some folks out there, which was nice, but again, lots of people, so I bumped into, and Melissa a couple times, which was nice. There were a lot of folks that volunteered in the community for the various things, and that was great to see. And I think overall attendance, probably partly due to, to the weather, as well as just people getting out, was very nice to see. But I don't know if anybody else in the board had any other comments on that.
They can always use more volunteers next year for Hot to Trot. They are down, Cindy said that there, I think there was around thirty volunteers, and they were, before COVID, at about eighty. So it's about getting the word out and getting more people out and active so that we can continue to do these types of events in our community. And the great attendance for the Fireman's Festival, maybe it's because the beer tent was moved, who knows?
It was shaded, so that would help. It was shaded, so that would help. Perhaps it was, I don't know. Any other comments, board members?
There is the farmer's market every other Thursday in Cottage Grove by Drumland residents at three thirty to six. And then there's Music in the Grove coming up too, right?
Yeah, yes.
And the, the chambers marketplace stays July eight, sixteenth, July sixteenth, and the village will have a tent or booth again, and our staff's putting together a sign-up sheet. It's a five-hour event from nine until two. And so we'll, we'll have at least one or two staff there at all times, and, and I know there's some board members that would like to be there as well, so I'll get the sign-up sheet out to you all as well, along with whatever we're planning to promote. So we have some ideas with that, and we'll, and, and some things to hand out too, so.
Some merch?
Or some Freezy Pops?
There you go.
November signs, just get rid of a bunch of signs.
Right, yeah, we joked about that, yeah.
November or something.
All right. Anything else? All right, move up to future agenda items. Anything that Matt, Erin, appear?
I realized I, I missed the priorities item when I was catching up with Greg quick. So it sounded like maybe there was just a question about when to have the rankings back to me. And really, as long as they're to me about a week and a half or so before the board meeting, so I can get that ready for the packet, but I'll send you guys a reminder. And, and those can be any, any way, shape, or form on how you want to submit those points. You could, you could put one point on twenty items, two points on ten, any, any way you want, so. That's it.
And then the only other question I think you missed was just whether or not we're going to have the, the meeting on the fifth, which I don't think we'll need it, but I didn't know if anything's.
No, I don't think so, at this point.
Yeah, unless something pops up.
Hopefully, everyone cooperates with not, not getting us a.
That's kind of what I said, I pointed to Rick, actually, and blamed him because he went around, so. Go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry, I was just, can you send the points from the previous, last year's priorities then to?
Yeah, the, yes, I'll do that. The, the spreadsheet actually will show the two last year, so you'll see where they were ranked last year, and then it shows even the previous, where they were previously before that, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Next up then, I'll make a motion to go into closed session. This closed session is to establish a negotiating position regarding Deer Grove EMS district and joint fire agreements. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, parentheses one, parentheses E, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. With that, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. This is a rule call.
Walwick?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Valencia?
Um.
And Williams?
Aye. All right, we're going to the closed session.